Welcome, everybody, to the October 12th, 2020 meeting of Van Wert City Council. We'll begin with an invocation by Pastor Keith Stoller, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. If everybody would please rise.
Heavenly Father, we're very, very thankful that we sense your spirit and your grace throughout this day and now, Lord, this evening. We're thankful, God, for the good weather for our farmers getting off their crops. We're thankful also, dear God, that you've given us wisdom and understanding as we, as citizens, approach our responsibility to make guided, spirit-guided decisions in our voting in our national elections. We pray, God, that your will will be done, that your sovereign will and plan will be revealed to each one of us, that we would make choices appropriate to you. God, we're thankful for the call to public service again this evening, and we pray for your wisdom to infect and influence every discussion and decision made again this evening. We thank you for our relationship with you through our Lord Jesus Christ, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Pastor. Drew, please call the roll.
Mr. Marshall?
Here.
Mr. Callis?
Here.
Mr. Penn?
Here.
Mr. Egler?
Here.
Mrs. Murgy?
Here.
Mr. Helman?
Here.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
All right, everybody was presented the agenda for this evening's meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Hearing none?
Moved to accept.
Moved to accept by Mrs. Murgy, second by Mr. Callis. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
All right, everybody was also provided the minutes from our last meeting dated September 28th, 2020. Any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Moved to accept.
Moved to accept by Mrs. Murgy, second by Mr. Egler. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Murgy?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Callis?
Yes.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
All right, comments, communications, and petitions. The floor is yours, Mrs. Hallow. Or are we going to wait till economic development?
I think we'll wait till economic development.
Okay, all right. I do have a couple. This is just information. Tuesday, are you going to talk about Tuesday, 10/20?
10/20?
October 20th.
Oh, October 20th.
October 20th, we have, we are going to have a informational meeting, informational meeting with all, and we've invited all of the individuals that are on the ballot for the charter commission as an educational opportunity for them.
Made arrangements with Gary Hunter to have a Zoom meeting. They can either log on from home or come up here as they please.
Yes. Just to answer some basic questions, make sure that they are, you know, if asked questions, they know the basics. The other thing that I have under comments, communications, right here, Drew is typing on one of our new Chromebooks. We have received, have we received all of them?
No. Only the two bigger ones.
Okay.
The smaller ones haven't come yet.
We are, we're, once those all come in, we're going to obviously get them all set up. Everybody, all council members will have one, since they're Chromebooks, they're Google Chromebooks, we are planning on using a, I guess, generic emails. So, and we had to figure all this out, but, you know, like Van Wert President, Van Wert Ward One, Van Wert Ward Two, so that, you know, and it benefits, there's a couple benefits there. As people get reelected or move off of council, the email goes with the position as opposed to us having to set up and use a personalized-style email. And we believe it'll allow us to do an administrative role through Google so that one person can control all of the, all of the accounts. So, there's, there's some work that we need to do before we get all those to everybody. So, okay? That's all I have. Is there any comments, communications, petitions from council?
I had a couple residents approach me about speeding down Urban Street from the stop line going towards St. Mary's, or St. Mary's School, or the old Jefferson School.
From where?
On Urban, Urban and Walnut, South Walnut.
From the four-way stop?
Yeah.
And heading east.
Heading east?
Yeah, east.
Okay, that's a long stretch to Jennings Road.
And being that I do live in that area, they'll crack, but I told them I'd break. They were just a little frustrated that the sound, but more or less the, from the stop sign, they get it and go.
Okay.
They asked maybe if we could put a, one of those.
The trailer.
If we put the trailer out there and then ask, ask to do a couple more through there.
Maybe get it in quickly.
Yeah.
We usually put that thing away when it gets frozen temperatures out, but we can move it.
Okay. Was that it, Jeff?
That was it.
Any other comments from communications from council?
I got a message from Heartland Patriots. They're having their regular meeting tomorrow night, and their intention is to discuss everything that's on the ballot. They've got Rick Turner, Savannah's career superintendent, talking about their renewal levy. They have Todd Wolf from scheduled to speak about county government. State Representative Craig Riedel speaking about what's going on with the Ohio General Assembly. And then it says, comments and questions on charter city issue would be welcome. That's tomorrow night at Wesley United Methodist Church at seven o'clock.
That's all I got. All right, I am, I am pres, I am out of town on Tuesday nights. I have to travel. Is anybody available to go and?
Did they ask for anybody, Ken?
No.
Yet they're going to entertain questions.
Anybody available to go to?
I have to drive soccer tomorrow.
Potentially answer questions?
I was planning on dropping in if my six o'clock meeting is finished in time.
Okay. What time, what time is it tomorrow?
Seven o'clock.
If you can make it, please go. I wish I was in town, but I am not.
I'll go. Even if Hope had their official opening yesterday.
Okay.
And they had, I don't know, 30, 40 people there, had their first occupants last night.
Good. I'm glad. Not quite cold out yet, which is good.
Ken, what time was that meeting?
Seven o'clock. Wesley United Methodist Church.
Okay, anything else? All right, administrative reports, Mayor, Mr. Ken Markward.
Thank you, Mr. President. In addition, just a piece of information, I checked through last Friday, there were approximately 750 people in the city who have already voted, and about 900 others that had their ballots mailed to them. So, it looks like we're on pace for a similar type of a turnout as what we saw four years ago for the last presidential election. So, we continue to have our informational meetings. People have been dropping in in small groups with various questions, none that were particularly new from what we'd heard before, except one that I hadn't heard, I can't, I don't think I've told you. The question was whether a city would give up its sovereign immunity by becoming a charter city, which was a good question. So, I knew Lima had a charter, so I sent an email over there, just to ask them. You weren't right next door to me. So, he said, you don't give it up.
Yeah, that's.
Which didn't surprise me.
Yeah.
But that was a question that hadn't been brought up in any of my other meetings, and it was somebody who works in the insurance industry, so he was keen to that.
Well, that's a valid, legitimate question to ask.
How that would affect. And then something that Mr. Davis brought up about, well, it kind of came out of our meeting from yesterday. One of the ladies was looking for our website, and it doesn't seem to show up at the front of a Google search. If you put in Van Wert, you get a lot of things like the Convention and Visitors Bureau, or you get the county government.
You get Van Wert Works.
Van Wert Health, Van Wert Civic Theater, you get some things like that. And it's, even when we put in City of Van Wert, Ohio, it doesn't seem to pull our site up very quickly. So, Jay was talking to the folks that did our recent website, and it just happened today, so we don't have all the details back. It may just be that we haven't completed the next step, or something needs to be corrected. We're not sure about that yet. So, we're looking into that because that's something that should show up quicker.
But for the public, the city's website is vanwert.org.
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 Then it'll come up right away.
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions for the mayor from council, from public? Thank you, Ken. Safety Service Director, Mr. Jay Fleming.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've got, we've got a wastewater project which entails rebuilding two pump stations and the industrial drive station out in the industrial park is completely complete now, including seating, so they've moved over to Franklin Street, and that project is underway now for the next few weeks. The North Water Tower's painting project is complete, and the tower's back in service now, so water's back in there again. And I just want to thank the public for their patience in that whole Washington Street, Main Street paving project. That was tough. I know traffic was backed up, but it's just hard to manage any of that through that corridor, but it's finally done. So, that's all I have to report.
Do we have any residual issues from the power outage that happened Saturday night? The, I mean, it took out half of the state, basically.
We, we didn't have any issues.
We didn't have any issues?
No, we were on generator power, and so we got practice on Friday, and we did it on Saturday.
I do have a question, though, and this is just me being curious. How do the stoplights work?
Some of.
If there's, if there's no power anywhere else?
Some are battery backup equipped.
Okay.
Not all are. The new LED, yeah, we've put that in all the new.
All right, I was. Good to know. I was just curious. I was driving, I drove in on 118, like, it's completely dark except for the green and red lights.
Yeah.
All right. That would probably just be the one at the school and the one at five. Yeah, it is. Yeah. Because they're new. Okay. Any questions for the Safety Service Director from council?
I have a question. The, the stretch that got repaved of Main Street down there, we were, you were having the issues with losing parking spots potentially. Where are we at with that? Has it been painted? I haven't been down there in a couple days.
It's been painted, and if you notice, there are three stripes missing that will be completed at a later time.
Okay, perfect.
But they're coming back.
I know that was a contentious issue.
Yes, it was.
And there was no paint a couple days after, so I want to make sure.
There was a workaround, so.
Okay, good deal.
Don't start talking about this. That was, that's, that's very contentious. Parking spots. All right, from the public? Thank you, Jay. Auditor, Mrs. Martha Balye.
I had emailed out earlier today the bank reconciliation from September 30th, which really has no surprises, but we'll, I'll go over real quickly. We had $13 million on the books and $13 million in the various bank accounts and investments. We are trending compared to last year, general fund revenues. Our projection was that we would be 10% behind our projection. Our projection was a 4% increase in income tax. We're just a little over 5% below what we were last year in income tax, so considering we thought we were going to have a 4% increase, it looks like the 10% is going to probably be true. If you look at the comparison to last year, almost every field is in the red compared to last year, but pretty much what we anticipated. We have spent $188,000 more than what we have taken in in the general fund, which is pretty much what we had anticipated. But on the positive side, we did receive another chunk of CARES Act money. We just got a check last week for $384,778. The total that we have received in CARES Act dollars is $569,63749. We have bought personal protective equipment for mostly police and fire, but a few things for all the workers, sanitation items. We're upgrading most of the bathrooms to be no-touch. The Chromebooks we purchased so that we can do remote meetings if we need to. But they have changed the rules as to what you could spend those dollars on, so we are now allowed to reimburse salaries in the general fund for police and safety and health workers. So, for us, that's police and fire. So, whatever dollars, because originally, whatever dollars you didn't spend, by the end of the year, you had to send back.
Right.
But now, we will be able to use all the money one way or another, and that will be a big boost to the general fund because there'll be several hundred thousand dollars that will go back to the general fund to reimburse for those salaries.
Good.
So, we actually could end, end the year in the general fund in a pretty favorable position. So, just have to kind of wait and see what happens.
But you don't want COVID hitting every year, so.
No, 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 no.
Spend wisely.
You said we're, we're in the red. Are we actually, are we spending less money than we did last year? I know we're taking in like a 10% decrease, but are we spending decreased to any degree?
Not really.
Or is it kind of flat?
Our, our expenses don't really change that much. I mean, because our, the majority of our expenses are salaries and fringe benefits.
Yeah, so they're fixed.
So, yeah.
You know, we're so, I mean, we're so, really so up against it all the time, we're not, we don't really have room to. Cut it anymore. Well, yeah, room to cut or room to expand it.
And I don't, I don't really do, I haven't done a, like, monthly comparison of expenses. We always compare the revenues, but, I mean, I have a comparison of the totals by month, but I can take a look at that, but I don't really see.
But we still have to provide services.
Yeah.
But compared to what you, the budget that we, we had passed, we're really in line with that no matter what. Is that, is that basically how we, we, year in, year out?
Well, not with the budget, as far as expenses go, yes.
That's what I meant, yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
I should have said expenses.
Yes.
Be clear, sorry.
Yes, yeah. So, and as John mentioned, we've received, we ordered two larger Chromebooks, one for Drew and one for Jay, and then the rest are 11-inch Chromebooks. They, they says, says their ship. They haven't come yet, and we have a charging station that has been received, and we're still waiting on a laptop for the law director. But all that has been ordered and should be here by the end of the year, and we should be able to have it up and ready to roll. That's all I have.
All right, any questions for the auditor from council? From the public? Thank you, Martha. Law Director, Mr. John Hatcher.
Thank you. We had a meeting last week. Mr. Marshall was involved. Mr. Lawson, I think, I believe, Safety Service Director and the mayor were both there as well, as, as, as well as the county prosecutor, the health department, and someone from Adult Protective Services, going over some different things to do with possibilities with some of our distressed properties. Because factual situations are that there are a number of times that some of the owners are elderly people who can no longer take care of their property. Sometimes they have certain issues that, that come with their physical health as well as their mental health. And we were just basically kind of discussing different things that can be done to work together to more efficiently handle those problems. You know, we've, we've all been kind of working independently of each other, and, and sitting us all down in a room to kind of discuss problems that we all kind of have some overlap with, was, was a very fruitful conversation, and we have a, we have a property in particular where we're, we're potentially seeing some benefits on that. So, that was a nice update, and I think that's something that going forward will be very beneficial for some of these, these properties that we deal with. I think that's all I have. Do you have anything you want to add to that, Mr. Marshall?
I can do it in my report, if you'd like, but I can.
That's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for the law director from council? From the public? Thank you, John. Committee reports, health, service, and safety, Mr. Bill Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've got a short report tonight. Not many new violations since the last time. The only thing that stood out, there must have been a sale at the furniture store because we had three couches on the street.
Yeah, one was on my street.
So, again, to the public, when you decide to get a new couch, you got to find a home for it. It can't be found on the street. So, that's just a, we're, we do, we do frown upon those things. And alluding to what the law director said, we did have a fruitful conversation about a specific, a several specific positions, one which has come to light here just today. I had a councilman, and I know where this property is located. We've got a couple of properties that have been hard to serve, let's put it that way. And we have some issues as far as getting these people served. So, when they show up with a certified letter, there's no one home ever, which is kind of interesting. And it doesn't matter what time of the day or night. So, I think we're working on some methodology to serve these particulars, and I'll let the law director speak to that.
Well, there's a couple of different times because the way the, the, the way the statute is, is dictated, it requires that the property owner be given notice before legal action can be filed in court. So, when they avoid, police officer knocks on the door and they just, they don't answer the door, there's, there's something impeding the process there. Now, once they've been served with that and the requisite 15 days, that's within the, within the ordinance expires, as set out in the letter they receive, then the, then we go to serve them again. They avoid it. Once I've received notice from the court that they've avoided it, I, I have been, there are ways I can, can get them served in a different format, which I will have to, which I will be resorting to by necessity at this point, so. And I think those are, properties are on, is it Ray Street?
Vine.
Vine.
South Vine Street.
South Vine, and that will be done.
That concludes my report. Okay, any questions for Mr. Marshall from council?
Yeah.
Mr. Egler?
The 300 block of South Vine Street, I live near Milwaukee, and we've got two properties we're talking about, and since June, they mow their yard, and if there's something that the lawnmower is going to hit, you know, detrimental to the lawnmower, they just go around it, and instead of getting the weedier out and cutting the weeds down while the weeds are, and that, so the whole yard is weeds this high because they, you know, the next time they mow it, they mow around it, and, and that is, the ordinances we've got for mowing the yards is, to me, when I think of mowing the yard, I think of people like that. When I, when I, you know, like, we were, we were wanting, I was wanting to raise the, and I think, and I think the rest of you is thinking about the person that, gee, you know, can't mow it, you know, that's not who we're asking. You know, and the person that, that, you know, the person that we're, we're targeting is, that will not conform, that just ain't, aren't, and, and the ordinances we've got aren't working. You know, they're just not working. We, I, we're, I don't, we're, I, I, we're going to have to get back together and, in my opinion, and once and for all, you know, we, we just, we, we're coddling these people, and in my opinion, kind of coddling's over. I mean, it's a cancer growing, it's a cancer, and it just keeps growing, and, and we're allowing it. It's our fault. We don't do anything about it. It lives right across the street from me, a corner from me, and I put up with it for two years, and I'm tired of it. Nobody else in this room would live with that in, in their neighborhood. Nobody in this room would live with that in their neighborhood. And I put up with it for two years, and we've gotten nowhere. He went to court, what was it, May or June, he went to court, and, and they let him go. He went up there and lied, and they coddled him and said, well, okay, along with you and all that, well, there it is, October.
Comments? Questions? Thank you, Bill. Economic development, Mr. Jeff Callis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to turn it over to Stacy Adams.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, Mr. Callis. I am very happy to announce that Alliance Automation is planning an expansion in Van Wert. They are looking at an 80,000-square-foot building, will likely generate 40 new jobs. The good news is the pay, the average pay for the jobs that are created are significantly higher than the average for Van Wert County. They're working through the annexation process now, and I think we have some legislation. What we're hoping to do is extend water and sewer services out to that site. That will become a part of the city of Van Wert. They have earmarked or will receive some funding from the state of Ohio for that betterment. And what we are asking the city to do is enter into an agreement with Alliance where they will transfer a $100,000 incentive that they have received, and that will pay the material costs for the pump and the materials for the water and sewer extension out to this site. So, do you want me to turn it over to you for that piece of it?
Well, first, there, any, we talked about this two weeks ago, and, yeah, at the time, we weren't allowed to announce what the company was or, or where. Anybody have any questions for Stacy? Last week, a, you know, or la, not last week, last meeting, everything was kind of hush-hush because we were waiting on some Ts crossed and Is dotted, and now everything's, everything's good to go and out in the open.
Stacy, is that operational 2022?
Yes.
Okay.
It's probably a spring 2021 start and typically takes about 12 months is what they would anticipate.
And the location for everybody is immediately north of the cement plant on?
John Brown.
John Brown. I get Dutch John and John Brown mixed up every time.
And what do they manufacture?
Actually, they make robotics, so industrial robotics is probably their primary function. I think that's the other plus for Van Wert.
Yes.
They are looking at 40 new jobs. They have just gone through an acquisition themselves with a company in Toledo, and it's an industry that we anticipate is going to continue to grow. So, we're hoping that this isn't the end of it, that they will also have room for expansion for, for Alliance as well, out at that new location.
Have they hinted at anything with the current property that they, what their plans are?
That is a leased property today, so actually Wannamakers beside that.
Okay.
Owns that. So, I think the good news for us, too, even if there are no immediate use, there's, there's no, not a lot of available warehouse space.
Yes.
In Van Wert, and so I'm confident that it will be utilized.
Yeah, I just, all you do is think about the spec building that was built, and it didn't even really get it, get out on the market at all, and it was, it was grabbed up. Well, great. Jeff?
Do we want to go ahead and?
Yep.
The law director has prepared resolution number 20-09-051. I'd like to make a motion to introduce this before council.
Okay. Motion introduced 2009051. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Penton. Any questions? Drew, please read the resolution and call the roll.
Resolution number 20-09-051, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to sign a memorandum of understanding with Alliance Property Group and declaring an emergency. Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Since this resolution was prepared in emergency, I'd like to make a motion that the statutory rules be suspended.
A motion to suspend statutory rules, second by Mr. Penton. Please call the roll.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion that resolution number 20-09-051 be passed on its first and final reading.
Okay, motion to pass on first and final, second by Mr. Penton. Please read the resolution and call the roll.
Resolution number 20-09-051, a resolution authorizing the safety service director to sign a memorandum of understanding with Alliance Property Group LLC and declaring an emergency. Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Anything else on this topic? Yes?
Two other things separate.
Absolutely. No, I, I, yep. Go ahead. Oh, yeah.
Um, just thought I would give you an update on the Home Guard Building, where we are. We are, we have submitted for the target of opportunity. We talked about that at the last meeting. The agency had reviewed our application request the date of the last meeting. We are now waiting for the director's review, approval, and signature on that grant application, which we have not received. We have received communication today, but it is not formally approved at this point, so that's what we're waiting on. Once we have that signature, then we are obligated to, we need a day, we will publish it in the paper, we have to wait seven days, publish it again, wait seven days. So, even if we get the approval tomorrow, the very earliest that we will see our ability to open any bids is October 28th. And every day from now, from tomorrow, that is delay, just pushes that back because I can't short circuit that publishing process. So, even if I get it tomorrow, we're probably October 28th. We have proactively had a conversation with Chief Jones. He has amended the order on that building and has asked us to start the demolition by the original 60-day target date of November 15th, and then has given us 60 days to get the demo completed after that. But we will see, the, the risk is, frankly, if the period to bid is too short, then it just increases the cost of the price, the price on the demo that we get. So, we've got some leeway looking forward already. But if we can't start by that date for some reason, then we're going to have to revisit that with Chief Jones.
We've had no other instances with that property since the initial collapse?
We have not, but I will tell you, there is a window that is
Yeah.
that is at risk today. But again, the alley's blocked off, the road is blocked off, the property is fenced, so
Okay, all right.
we will continue to move as quickly as we are. And one other topic, if that's okay. I just wanted to remind people also some CARES Act money that the Van Wirt County has received. Rick McCoy at the Emergency Management Agency is going to oversee a program to distribute some of that CARES Act money to small businesses. It is limited to businesses that are, have 30 or less employees, $1 million in revenue or less, has to be a for-profit business, and it can't be used for payroll or eligible expenses if they receive the paycheck protection formally. But I think there is like a million dollars worth of aid to small businesses. So, I will give this information to the media, and I just wanted to make sure that we communicated that to the public. The contact is Rick McCoy's office, and his email is emamcoy@vanwerdeema.com. You can always call our office. We'll, we can shoot this information that we have received from Mr. McCoy, but I just want to make sure that businesses locally understand that there are some funds available to them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Any questions for Stacy?
The only thing I wanted to bring up, Stacy, I sent, I copied you on the email that I'd sent to Ken about the search engine optimization on the website. I, as, as a millennial, I guess, it's very important to me to see Van Wirt, Van Wirt Economic Development, 1, 2 on that list on Google. So, I don't know if that's something where you guys can work together to try to get that figured out, but it's the same thing. We type in Van Wirt, and Van Wirt Economic Development is nowhere to be found. So, if that's something we could look into, that would be, it just makes sense.
We certainly will. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. You finished? Or you got something else?
We got a memorandum of understanding.
That's, that goes with the O5.
Yeah, that's the appendix, or the, the appendix.
That's all that is present.
Okay. All right. Parks Recreation, Mr. Joel Penton.
Parks Recreation has no report tonight, Mr. President. Thank you.
Any questions for Joel? Thank you. Finance, Mr. Jeff Egler.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance, Ednum, report the hearing.
Any questions for finance? Thank you, Jeff. Judiciary and Annexation, Mrs. Joy Mergie.
Thank you, Mr. President. Evidently, at the last meeting, Travis's not there, but legislation was requested, accepting the final plat, final plat for the Elks Drive.
Yes.
So, at this point, I'd like to introduce resolution 201054.
Okay, motion to introduce 2010054, second by Mr. Egler. Please read the resolution.
I didn't see the minutes, that was why.
I don't think it was.
Let me check, let me check, let me check. No report from judiciary, so.
Got to introduce it.
You need to.
I need to add some.
Yeah, so, you're, you're going to resend your request, right?
I would like to make a motion to resend my previous request.
You okay with that, Mr. Egler? Okay, so basically, this is, this is the extension, Elks Drive, in order to get us to
The new airport.
the new airport terminal. Now that it is, I guess, finished.
It's finished.
We are taking over the, I guess, lights and that type of stuff. Correct, Jay?
Well, I, I believe this covers that. Do you, we certainly have to approve the plat so the plat can be recorded.
Correct. The question is whether or not the street needs to be dedicated to the city or not.
And typically, after the plat's recorded, then the developer comes back, usually there's a, a one-year period, then they come back and say, now I wish to dedicate the infrastructure.
Okay.
We are at the one-year period. So, I, I believe they need to make a request for dedication. We'll have to do one more ordinance coming up.
That's fine.
To make sure that's, everything's clean.
Yeah, okay, all right. So, this is just accepting?
Step one.
I'd like to make a motion, a resolution being prepared, accepting the final plat for that Elks Drive's extension, and find an emergency basis.
Okay. Motion to prepare a resolution, second by Mr. Egler. Any questions?
Please call the roll. Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Resolution 20-10-054 has been prepared. I'd like to make a motion to introduce that resolution.
Okay, motion to introduce 20-10-054, second by Mr. Egler. No, you need to read that one.
Resolution number 20-10-054, a resolution accepting the final plat for the Elks Drive extension in the city of Van Wirt and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Since this resolution has been prepared as an emergency, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the statutory.
Okay, motion to suspend, second by Mr. Egler. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And I'd like to make a motion that resolution 20-10-054 be passed on its first and final reading.
Okay, motion to pass on first and final, second by Mr. Egler. Please read the resolution and call the roll.
Resolution 20-10-054, a resolution accepting the final plat for the Elks Drive extension in the city of Van Wirt and declaring an emergency. Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And that concludes my report.
Okay, any questions for judiciary and annexation? Thank you, Joy. Streets and alleys, Mr. Steve Helman.
I do have a resolution, but, Mr. Egler, did you want to ask Jay about that?
Yeah, the, there's a resolution that was, I'm reading, it says, the approval and replacement of the Market Street Bridge, and including the approach construction resurfacing portions of Market Street between Crawford Street and Central Avenue. Well, a year ago, the only blacktopping we done because of Rosemont out there was, what was it, Oak Lane, and like we was going to do Walnut, and we was going to do Garrison, and that was all. And, and I brought up then, when, when the streets was brought up, I said downtown Market Street was worse than Walnut, you know, the, and, and I was told that the bridge work that was going to be done, when they got the bridge, they would go ahead and pave that to the railroad track.
Good. Jay?
This is only the part of the work connected to the ODOT-funded bridge. ODOT doesn't fund anything beyond Central Avenue, so there'll be a separate project for the additional paving. This is just required ODOT legislation for the bridge portion.
Okay, I was, I was on the understanding that, that they was going to, they was going to, uh.
No, they, they wouldn't give us, I wish they would. Bridge is actually free, but.
So, so, how do we, how, Market Street is downtown, Market Street, Market Street's downtown.
It's our intent to get a contractor, if not the paving contractor selected, to do the bridge work and, and at least continues to, I'd like, we want to do something with Market Street in conjunction with this. We just can't tie it to the ODOT project. It's got to be a separate contract.
But for economies of scale, when they're here anyway, if we can, if we can get it to go north.
Might get a little better deal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Since they're already there.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I would like to make a motion for the law director to prepare a resolution to approve the replacement of the Market Street Bridge and demolition of the building located in 231 South Market and declaring an emergency.
Okay, motion to prepare. Do I have a second? Second by Mr. Marshall. Please call the roll.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
The law director has prepared resolution number 20-10-053, and I'd like to make a motion to introduce this resolution.
Okay, motion to introduce 20-10-053, second by Mr. Marshall. Does he have to read it now? I don't think so. No, yeah. You're right.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And since this resolution was, was prepared as an emergency, I, I ask for a motion that the rules be suspended.
Okay, motion to suspend rules.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Marshall. Please call the roll.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
And I would like to make a motion that resolution number 20-10-053 be passed on its first and final.
Okay, motion to pass resolution 20-10-053 on first and final, second by Mr. Marshall. Now you need to read it and call the roll.
Resolution number 20-10-053, final resolution for the city of Van Wirt to approve the replacement of the Market Street Bridge, including approach reconstruction, resurfacing portions of Market Street between Crawford Street and Central Avenue, demolition of the building located at 231 South Market Street, to grant the mayor the authority to enter any agreement with the Department of Transportation in a further interest of said project and declaring an emergency. Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penton?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
I believe that is all.
Okay, I do, I do have a question, but not for you, for the law director. Are we all set with that building? No?
We, we're all set. Yeah, we, we can tear it, this project can tear it down.
We could tear it down.
We haven't finished the.
We haven't finished negotiation?
It's not disposed of. It's not completed yet.
Okay. All right, well, we're passing legislation that says we're going to tear it.
We could tear it down. We, we have possession of the property. We can tear it down.
Okay, so we're just.
Yeah, there's nothing legally that can stop us.
Okay, all right. Just, just a quick question. We're passing legislation that says we're going to tear it down, just to make sure we're allowed to. All right, any questions for Streets and Alleys? All right, thank you, Steve. Property and Equipment, Mr. Andrew Davis.
Property and Equipment has no reports.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Davis? Thank you. We talked about code enforcement under unfinished business, judiciary and annexation, charter government. We noted the meeting with the individuals on the ballot. We have a Facebook Live answer session scheduled for Thursday at 7:00.
And every Thursday through the end of the month.
Okay.
Same deal. The only other thing that I wanted to bring up on this was something that Ken and I had talked about in one of the meetings. We feel that the Charter Commission, if put in place, those meetings would be open to public for everybody to attend. Is that the understanding of the council?
You mean assuming the?
Assuming, assuming we pass, those meetings would be open to the public to attend.
I, I am not confident in my answer.
I didn't think they were.
I don't think they are, and here's why. I, I may be wrong. We'll have to check with our, with council, with, with Mr. Hunter. But they're treated differently. They're, they're not, I don't think they're subject to sunshine laws like we are. So, we'll, we'll have to verify that. We'll have to verify that.
I think that's something contentious in the public, that they, if they knew that, I feel like some people would be more open to the process, that
Okay.
they would be able to voice their opinion if that is the case. that they would be able to voice their opinion if that is the case.
Yes, as, as, yes, I understand, as everybody comes up here to voice their opinion during our meetings that we have every two weeks.
Yeah.
Yes, I understand.
So something we want to have an answer to.
Yes, we will get an answer, and.
Find the answer.
Right.
I was operating under the idea that since they were an elected commission, they would be subject.
See, I think it's opposite, but.
We're going to be a part of it though, right? Counsel?
No, not, not counsel as a whole, no.
Right.
No, we will have a couple, two to three ex officio, ex officio individuals involved. But that is simply, all that means is that, is that they have the ability to ask us processes, you know, how does, how does this work? In case they have a question, if they're looking at changing something, what would that example change mean to running of city council? And the, you know, the suggestion early on was that it would be, you know, basically me, Mr. Hunter, and potentially the mayor, and, and Mr. Hatcher. But we're still gonna, we still need to flesh out that stuff. But counsel as a whole will not be, will not be in those meetings.
Well, that was another thing we could not find in writing. Do you remember where we heard this, about three people?
That was during our initial conversations with Mr. Hunter. Yeah, I was, I was in that conversation. When we were having, when we were discussing the educational process and the timing of when we had to put the legislation in front of counsel, the 60 days, the 90 days, the 120.
The one in this room?
Yeah, the one in that room.
See, I thought he was offering that as a recommendation.
No, it is a recommendation. It's not in stone. Yeah, we don't have to. We don't have to.
But perhaps I misunderstood. I thought you implied that we were limited to three.
No, that was his recommendation.
On the Charter Commission?
No. How many other people?
Ex officio.
I think they, I think the Charter Commission can invite whoever they want to those meetings. So your impression is it's almost like they're in executive session the whole time?
Yes.
And they can invite whoever they want?
That, that was.
Like any other executive session?
Yeah. I was, I was of the opinion that if they wanted to hear from a, a previous mayor maybe, or who, you know, whatever, whoever, they could invite whoever they wanted. Now, I'm not 100% sure on that, but that's what I've thought all along. And it was kind of up to them who.
We will get, we will get answers.
Yeah, a lot of it seems to be just semantics that we need to iron out because the, as those questions come up, that's stuff that we could point out in the Q and A sessions.
Sure.
So, just having those answers so we can move along.
Ken, would you mind reaching out to Gary tomorrow, please?
I'll send him an email.
And CC me also, because I'm with Mr. Davis Thursday night.
Anybody else that wants to attend Thursday night? The more, I think people, whoever watches, I think the, the views have been limited, but if we can get my mug off of the screen, that's probably a positive, I feel.
Yeah, because.
Keep the game on you.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm real popular on Facebook right now.
I've seen your name a lot lately.
Why is everybody laughing? I don't even, I don't even have Facebook.
You do, you just don't know.
My name's out there, I just. Alright, so Charter got any new business to come before council this evening? We have no ordinances on the consent agenda, and we do have a third, third reading from Streets and Alley's.
So.
Motion to pass.
Yeah, motion to pass on.
Yes.
Before we get started, I.
Oh, yes.
Can I go ahead?
Yes.
Um, it's come to my attention that 046 needed a couple of changes. Adding the word zones, one in the title, and, and in the first whereas. Changing parking zone to zones because obviously we're doing this in three of the four directions. I believe that would constitute a needed amendment to 20046. 20-09-046. So we amended it.
We need to amend it again.
Again.
Yes.
And we're just putting in zone in the title and zones, okay. Yeah, be the second line in the first whereas. So I guess I just would ask for what, the law director to prepare?
No, you would ask for an amendment to.
Oh, yeah, I just want to ask for an amendment to ordinance 20-09-046 to change the language to no parking zones and a no parking zones for the 30 feet. I have one more. Just, just, I just want to make this, Section 1 says from each crosswalk. I want to change that from each corner. And while we're amending it.
Yes.
Because that would be more accurate since we did away with crosswalks.
So we have three issues. We're adding the, you know, it's going to be enact no parking zones in the title.
Right.
And in the first whereas, and then in Section 1, from each corner, those are the three.
Yes.
Sections. Okay, we have a motion to amend 046, seconded by Mr. Egler. Please call the roll. Right now, just call the roll.
Alright, Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Now, pass on first and final, or third and final.
Yes, I just would like to make a motion to pass this on its third and final reading, ordinance number 20-09-046.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Egler. I have one point of order question. Does Drew need to read it as amended?
Yes.
Okay.
Ordinance 20-09-046, an ordinance to enact no parking zones at the intersection of Sycamore Street and North Market Street as amended.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Okay, anything else to come before council this evening?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Egler, seconded by Mr. Davis. Please call the roll.
Mr. Egler?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
Mr. Cows?
Yes.
Mr. Penning?
Yes.
Mrs. Mergie?
Yes.
Mr. Helman?
Yes.
Thank you.